Good evening. I hereby call to order the Roseville City Council meeting for, excuse me, the Roseville Economic Development Authority meeting for Monday, April 14th, 2025. Mr. Executive Director, would you call the roll, please?
Member Shorter.
Here.
Member Graff.
Here.
Member Bauer.
Here.
Member Strawn.
Here.
President Rowe.
Here. And with us at the table, we have our city attorney, Rachel Tierney, who's back this week, as well as our city manager, Pat Trudgeon, who's the executive director of the Economic Development Authority. And we'll have other staff and guests participate in the meeting as the agenda moves forward, and we'll make those introductions at that time. I would note for members of the public, we do have a complete copy of all the meeting materials in a binder on the back table, right by the back door, which is available for the public to share if you need to refer to any of the materials in the meeting this evening. We also do have extra copies of the both EDA and council agendas that you can have for your own if you need to follow along with the meetings this evening. And those are also available on the back table. I would note for folks who have cell phones to make sure and silence those or otherwise assure that they don't disrupt our meeting. And I believe with that, I think those are all the housekeeping items to start the meeting here. We'll go ahead and ask folks to stand, if you're able, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Clerk) [inaudible]
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next to our agenda this evening for the E, excuse me, the Economic Development Authority is approval of tonight's agenda. There is only one business item on tonight's agenda, so unless there's any objection, we'll consider the agenda approved, hearing no objection. That is the plan. Then next, we will note that the public comment section of the meeting does not usually take place in the Economic Development Authority portion of our evening. We will certainly make sure we have that general public comment opportunity at the start of the council meeting, when that begins immediately after the Economic Development Authority meeting. With that, then, that brings us to our business items for the Economic Development Authority. And we have the one item, as I noted, item 5A, which is to receive our Conference of Housing Needs Assessment. We have Janice Gunlock from our Community Development Department, our Community Development Director, as well as Jeanne Kelsey, our Housing and Economic Development Program Manager, and Joel Kep, who is our Economic Development Coordinator. Thank you. And with that, we'll turn it over to you folks to present the results of our Housing Needs Assessment that we've been undergoing. Welcome to all of you.
Thank you, President Rowe, members of the board. This is sort of the last step of the Housing Needs Assessment that we started towards the end of last year. As the mayor mentioned, this is a joint presentation this evening, so Jeanne, Joel, and I will share responsibility on the presentation slides here.
Just to give you a little brief history, we started doing market studies actually in 2009. The HRA took those on, and then they updated that one in 2013. Based upon the EDA now being involved in that responsibility, they, we did our last one through the EDA in 2018. And so that's one reason why we brought it forward to you for updating. In addition to, we wanted to have an opportunity to maybe also take a little further extent of looking at what are some of our social welfare needs are in our community as it related to the homeless population as well. So you did enter into a professional service agreement with STAN-TAC, and they did come back to the meeting on January 13th and February 24th of this year to present some of the outcomes and findings of that report. Just to take a kind of a look back on the 2018 study, as you can see, Maxfield did do an update for us at that point and did show a significant need, but also did note that due to the limited land availability, not all of our demand may be able to be developed in Roseville.
And so before I go to the next slide, I just want to call your attention to the bottom line numbers. You'll see this chart from 2018, the 2018 report, which was the 10-year forecast then. There was the general occupancy on the one side of the slide, and then the age-restricted stuff on the other side of the slide. And you'll see about 880, 890 units each side of that table. So that was quite a significant housing unit need that was identified back at that old report in 2018. So moving up to the updated 10-year forecast that STAN-TAC proposed for us, you'll see the total unit count is significantly less, and this table includes both the general occupancy and the senior product type. And I just wanted to remind the EDA of a couple of forecast drivers. Some assumptions need to be made in making these forecasts. That includes the Metropolitan Council's 10-year household forecast that they do on a regular basis. There are some assumptions that are being made about household income levels when determining housing unit type need. And then, of course, the actual last five years of housing production. And that's not really an assumption. That's evaluating what was actually built in the last five years, because that impacts what the market says might be possible for the upcoming 10 years. Some other factors that are important to note when making a determination on housing need, and as Jeanne mentioned from the 2018 study, obviously, land, available land is a huge driving forecast. And Roseville is a fully developed community, so that has some implications on what we can do. Also, incoming households' housing needs are not all fulfilled through the creation of a new housing unit. So we refer to this as the lifecycle continuum. A new household may come into the community and buy an existing household or housing unit, and somebody within that unit might move up into a newer product. And then lastly, these assumptions about housing preferences are based on income levels. And that income assumption is that people are not paying more than 30% of their income on housing. And we already know there are a lot of people who do pay more than 30% of their income on housing. Those are referred to as cost-burdened households. But there are also a lot of people who choose to buy less than what they can afford based on spending 30% of their income on housing.
I just have a question. Do you have any idea of how the AL and memory care numbers were? Is that just supposing that approximately a certain amount of people would be needing those?
Again, it's in the forecast drivers bucket of just what's happening demographically within our community, what they've seen happen with housing unit selection over the last five years, and then, of course, income levels.
Okay. Just working in the senior housing sphere, the market, I checked today, and the average occupancy rate is about 75% right now, to include those in Roseville. So there are actually two properties that I'm aware of in the Twin Cities that are closing for low occupancy. So I think I can see that as like a general idea, but I also think it's important that we know actual things that are happening, and that maybe there isn't such a great need. It's not because there aren't people older who need it, but that there are funding source issues and uncertainties. So, but yeah, as I said, I do know of two facilities that are closing at the end of this month. So it's coming up rather quickly, and that would be across the area. So not two in, not two in Roseville, but two even in the Twin Cities.
I do believe in the actual study that STAN-TAC prepared, and the final report is in your packet, and we're asking you to receive that. But there is one chart in there where he attempted to go out and get vacancy rates of various product types in the community. And there was one that had a significant vacancy rate, to your point. And then, the other item I would just note is if you go back to this 10-year forecast from 2018, you can see the numbers on assisted living and memory care were quite large. And then, when you compare that to the updated numbers, I think maybe that also is reflective of some of the things that you may be mentioning in the market.
So, and if I can just clarify, too, these numbers, would that reflect net additional units beyond what's currently in the marketplace? So it may be that that these numbers are fairly low, reflecting that there's already a fair amount of capacity and the occupancy rate is kind of low.
Exactly. Yeah. Thank you. So if we're done on this slide, I'm going to go to this next one. And I wanted to be careful about how we presented this information, because these forecasts are just glimpses in time. The STAN-TAC forecast is not necessarily a reflection of what the 2018 forecast said we needed, and then what we built. So net-net, what we have left to build is what's in the STAN-TAC study. That's not what this is intending to represent. But we did think it was important for you to understand the numbers from 2018, what we've actually developed, and then coming up with a difference over that same period of time. And then you can see what the new sort of glimpses on the 10-year forecast. Again, these are just numbers, snapshot in time. The Maxfield study separated out subsidized and age-restricted product, whereas the STAN-TAC study has not done that on both the general occupancy and active adults. So we have noted under STAN-TAC study, the numbers included in affordable on the Maxfield number. So I just wanted to clarify that. And a couple of key takeaways from all of these numbers, which says a lot. There is still a demand for 350 market-rate rental housing units. That's a significant number. 250 of those are general occupancy, and 100 units of those are senior. There is still a need for 100 general occupancy affordable rental units. And you might say, I can't even believe that because we overbuilt what the 2018 study said we needed. But this isn't surprising, because in the region, we are undeveloping housing. We're not building enough housing to keep pace with demand. And if you look at, the Met Council just released a study on housing production. If you look at communities similar to ours, you'll see something very, very much the same happen in those communities that happened here in Roseville. So it's not unusual for a community like Roseville to have built far more general occupancy affordable housing than maybe a housing forecast suggested you needed at, over a 10-year period. And again, that can be attributed to housing production, and the region is not keeping pace with demand. But I will say, the numbers have gone down quite significantly when you compare to the 2018 numbers. And then the last item I wanted to note, there is still a need for ownership units. And there's an 80 number identified. It's split up into three different product types, which surprisingly, the senior number is the biggest at 15 senior ownership units, likely a cooperative or a condominium, 10 single-family, and 20 multifamily, which could be twin or townhomes. So understanding this, we wanted to sort of touch on real briefly some of our existing housing programs. I'll turn that over to Jeanne.
Yep. So I wanted to give you a highlight of some of the programs that we have. And just so you know, and again, all of the loan programs that are existing for home ownership were all previously through the HRA levy. So those are existing fund balances, and that they are revolving loan, most of them, or it's a deferred until sale of the home. I think the one thing that I want to take your attention to is the community land trust, it's not an outstanding loan balance. That is guaranteeing us the affordability of 99 years on the homes, because they are in a land trust. And ultimately, that the home will always then, at that 99 years, go to a first-time home buyer, meeting the income qualifications. Many of those funds, just so you know, again, were HRA either previous funds, that they were put aside for programs, or we've applied for grants that we've gotten successfully through the Met Council, or also Ramsey County. In addition to, there are some outstanding CDBG loan balances out there. That as the home sell, they have to pay us back, or we have, there's, generally, it has to maintain affordability. And if they don't want to maintain the affordability, then we're paid back. And that's why we have that CDBG balance on our books.
Community Development.
Pardon?
Community Development Block.
Correct. Correct. So I just wanted to draw that to your attention. So those funds will never be paid back on that program. The rest will. And then in addition to the small program, I just wanted to make you aware that the Small Business Loan Program has successfully given out, loaned out two loans so far. And that is an EDA levy fund that was established, when the EDA was established, for doing tight business. And that that does have a repayment on a regular basis. So we wanted to provide you what we do have as resources coming in for some of these fund balances at this point.
And, you know, this slide will sort of, it's sort of foreshadowing some things we want to talk about when we get to the strategy section. But we felt it was important for you to understand sort of the monetary impacts of these programs as it relates to the EDA levy, and what's out there to be repaid, what's coming in monthly, what's probably not coming in until the home sells. And again, as Jeanne mentioned, we only have the Small Business Loan Program on this chart, just because it does have a monthly payback. And then also, as we get further along in the presentation, I just want to also highlight the 212,000 balance on, that's our local affordable housing aid. That's the proceeds that we're receiving from the housing sales tax that the legislature enacted a session ago.
We wanted to also give you the opportunity to see that not one neighborhood, it's all of Roseville, is actually actively utilizing our loan programs for housing at this point. And again, it's almost 2.2 million that you have invested in outstanding loan balances at this point that will be repaid underneath the repaid programs. And this did not include, just for your information, did not include the community land trust programs, homes at all that we've done so far.
Okay. So just really quickly, we wanted to get to the strategies part. So there were kind of two components to this study. One was the actual market assessment, and that's what we've always done. In the 2018 study, a secondary component to that study was sort of an opportunity site exercise. And we didn't really find much value in that. I mean, it was kind of interesting to see what was thought of as opportunity sites, but I think there was more value in that for the comprehensive plan update that was in process at that time. So we didn't want to do that again, but we did want to see if we could learn more about the homeless population or the homeless needs in the community. So there are two components to the strategies conversation. One relates to housing, and one relates to homelessness. So the first one on housing strategies, there are sort of three buckets. One relates to production, one relates to preservation, and then the third is capacity building. And to reiterate from the presentation the consultant gave the last time, we are not saying that these are all appropriate for Roseville. We're just representing that these are ways that communities have handled certain housing needs or issues within their community. And you'll note, on the, on all three of these categories, Roseville's doing a lot of things already. And so if you look on the production side, we have built market-rate apartments in the past five years, one of which received tax increment assistance. We have done rent-restricted affordable housing. In fact, we've done quite a lot of it, and that was reflected in the numbers. We have an ordinance that allows accessory dwelling units. We don't have a lot of them, but we do have a few in the community, and they are permitted. During the last zoning code update, we did enact revisions to our zoning code addressing housing unit types to try and achieve greater ability for certain housing units to be established in the community. Under the preservation side, we have done some NOAA preservation products. We obviously have a land trust program with Habitat. We have rental licensing in our fire department. We have a tenant notification ordinance. And as the previous slide showed, we have quite a lot of home improvement loan programs, where we are investing back into our housing stock. The last one there is an HOA loan. We don't have any active, but the city has done one in the past. So we have even used that strategy. And then lastly, on the capacity building side, we did create an Affordable Housing Trust Fund last year, just sort of knowing the housing sales tax was coming, and that was a way where we could sort of park that money if we didn't have a way to spend it within the four-year timeframe. So we are utilizing that capacity building strategy. The next slide on, oh.
I'd like to comment that, thank you for making all the Cs and Es, some weird "other" font, because it really kept me on my toes.
I don't, I don't know how that happened.
I know. It was like you were using a typewriter, and the C and E were on a different typewriter font.
Yeah, it's kind of funny, isn't it? I apologize. And some of these images might be a little blurry, because we had to cut and paste them out of the presentation from the consultant. So I apologize for that. On the homelessness side, again, this was new to the study. We've never done that. So we were sort of unsure with what we would be able to uncover or bring forward. But there are sort of a couple of things that are impacting the homeless community within Roseville. One is obviously preventing people from being homeless. And then those who are homeless, what could we do? And then, after you look at those two items, there's physical development and programmatic strategies. Under the physical development, that green box is just referring to the fact that you want to do your best to provide all different types of housing units at all different income levels. And that's the lifecycle continuum that we talked about. And then, on the homelessness side, obviously, city-owned, partner-managed housing. We don't have any of that. That's really at bigger communities. We do have a sacred settlement. The city wasn't actively involved in creating that sacred settlement, but we do have one in town. And then the programmatic strategies, which we are utilizing, and obviously, or I should note that our police department is very active with our homeless navigator on that. So we had all of that strategy conversation at the last meeting, and we sent you all away with a worksheet, and we sort of asked you, what are you interested in? What do you think is, could have a big impact on the community? And we sort of, our consultant compiled all of the results from that exercise, and we wanted to just sort of show you where there was consensus or alignment amongst members. So on the production strategies, under the high impact, we saw a lot of interest in market-rate apartments. The low-hanging fruit was the rent-restricted affordable. That's probably because we've already done a lot.
Can you explain what you mean by low-hanging fruit?
Stuff that's easy to accomplish. It's already there and available. And that's why I mentioned the rent-restricted affordable apartments. I think there was consensus around that, because we've already done it. We've already utilized our tools to create a lot of it.
So it'd be easiest for you to create more? Is that what that low-hanging fruit?
I don't believe that necessarily means there's interest in creating more. It's just that it was a low-hanging strategy that we could utilize to address a housing need.
Okay. I think even when doing it, I wasn't quite sure what the intention was, because often that scene is, oh, that's the, to me, that's the easy thing. So maybe a definition would have been easier, would have been, would have been, made it more clear. Because I feel like that would have been the, what's the easiest thing for us to do? That's the low, low-hanging fruit, the easiest to obtain or get at. And so then, in seeing this, I'm like, hmm, I'm not sure that was a shared understanding.
Well, I don't necessarily think the easiest automatically translated to let's do this.
Okay.
On the preservation side, a lot of the high-impact stuff is stuff we're already doing, which is naturally occurring affordable housing, land trust homes, tenant notifications, and housing rehab programs. The low-hanging fruit was the rental house, rental licensing. Again, we already have that in place. Under the capacity building was the Housing Trust Fund, which we already have. And then on the homelessness strategies, leverage partnership resources. I think that's some work that's already being done and will continue to be done. Again, the low-hanging fruit was the sacred settlements. Again, we already have one. And then discretionary resources. Again, that's stuff that we're already doing. And so I just want to reiterate again, this exercise was not about giving staff direction on what to do. It was recognizing there are lots of different ways to solve problems, and where might there be alignment amongst members in terms of interest? It was not to program any resources. So before I get to the recommendation, I wanted to share with you all the work that Joel's been doing. The last time we did a Housing Needs Assessment in 2018, we just put the PDF on the city's website, and we refer people to that PDF all the time, and they don't really know what they're looking at. And so Joel had come across how we might be better able to share this information with the public. So I'm going to turn it over to Joel.
Sure. Well, I'll be, I'll be quite brief. But our plan for disseminating this information, in addition to just the static report, is to kind of leverage the approach we've used in the past with our zoning code update, the Conference of Plan Update, which is these story maps, which are essentially a fusion of narrative and data and maps and interactive charts. And what we'll do is kind of summarize everything the city and the EDA are doing in the housing arena in kind of one dashboard that you can navigate between. And we do want to recognize our friends at Minnetonka, which is where this approach came from. So if you want to see this real quick, this is, this is Minnetonka's version of their dashboard. So this is kind of how it works, kind of a big waterfall page where the navigation sticks at the top here, and you can jump from section to section to learn about policies and programs and unit production, demographics. There's going to be a variety of links to off-site resources, links back to us, so we can drive people to, for example, the home, home improvement programs that we have. And this is a work in progress. So we've got ours started, preview. So it'll largely mimic what Minnetonka's doing, but have our own, have our own spin on it. So that's what we'll have. And we'll, when this is ready for primetime, this will go prominently on our, the housing section of the city website.
Would be also accessible from Grow Roseville as well?
Yeah. Yep, absolutely. And these work really well on, on mobile as well. And we know, kind of from our Grow Roseville consultants, that about 40% of our traffic on Grow Roseville is people working on the, using their mobile devices, not, not just a computer. So these are quite, interactive's not the right word.
Gaps.
Yeah. I forget the, I forget the word. But they work equally well on desktop and mobile. So that's, that's the, that's our goal for another way of sharing this information going forward.
And I'm glad you asked mayor if it was going to be available on Grow Roseville, because I think housing really is a reflection of economic development. And a lot of businesses, companies in town, companies looking to come to town, they want to understand demographics and what's available for housing. And so housing really is a function of economic development. I think a lot of times, we think of economic development as job creation, retail, commercial. But housing really is a component that impacts our ability to be economically successful. And so the last slide is just the staff recommendation, which is really just for you to receive and accept that final report. If you do that, we'll proceed with the web content that Joel just showed you, posting the report on our website. Again, at this time, it's information only. There are no policy or funding asks. But that leads me to the second one, which, and this showed up in the prioritization worksheet. But we really do need to have a conversation at some point very soon about how we want to spend our local affordable housing aid. We're not quite ready to bring that forward. I think we want to understand more how Minnesota Housing, who is going to be responsible for keeping track of how communities are spending that money, we want to understand how they're going to make us report on that before we get into a really detailed conversation about how we might spend it. The law is very specific on how we can spend it, but how we have to report on it and how the law is interpreted will make a big difference on what kind of recommendations we bring forward. So we're not ready to have that yet, but we will have it probably this year soon.
Are there certain dates around that reporting that we should be aware of, or when decisions have to be made? You may not know off the top of your head, and that's all I know.
Well, I know we have to spend the money within year three or four of receiving it. And so we got our first funding last, the end of last year. So that's sort of the rough timeframe of when Minnesota Housing is going to ask us to report on how we're spending it. But do you know any more than that, Jeanne?
I believe, though, that our first report for spending it is December of this year. So that's my understanding at this point. And so we're waiting for them to come out with that guidance and what that's supposed to look like.
That should give us a better time.
Well, and if we don't, we don't have to spend it by December, because we get that, yep. But then we'll understand how they're going to ask us to report it, and that will be helpful in the programming conversation.
I do have to say, with this whole report, actually, what I came away with was, Roseville's doing a lot of good work already. I think the programs we put in and the development we've done, to me, in a way, just showed that we're really actually doing a good job. I mean, obviously, we can always do more things, but it was, it reassured me that I think we're actually ahead of the game a bit after looking at this. So I think, I think, yeah, we just, in my opinion, I think just keep doing more of what we're doing is going to get us even further. So.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I was just gonna quickly say, my takeaway was that this was worked on a lot since the last meeting, and it's really, thank you for doing that, because it makes so much sense now. It was just your organization and all the different graphs and charts and information was excellent for me. It really made it readable and understandable.
Yeah, I would agree. And Joel's work looks great. Good job. Even though you stole from them, you know, we won't tell. No, it's really nice.
It happens all the time.
We, we took a good idea, and you helped and added our own. And to put our own twist on it, one thing I noticed that I want to make sure, if there's anything, maybe there's nothing we can do. But as we look at that for-sale multifamily, I know we've heard from various residents at McCarran's Pond and I know we've heard from various residents at McCarran's Pond and Rosewood Villa condos that they're experiencing so many rentals in these condos. And so here we have a built in location that is set up to be a multifamily owned property. And the person in the McCarran's Pond even indicated when we did the search, I think there was only like two actually owner occupied. So I don't know if there's anything we can do and probably Wayne maybe knows better than I, but I mean, I think this kind of extends to some of our single family homes too, that, you know, there are neighborhoods where there are a lot of rentals of those and, and, and maybe the markets change will, will impact that. But I don't know if there's anything we can do to make sure that the quality of those places stays up, but also that maybe, you know, if we're assuming that that is fulfilling a multifamily ownership piece, that, that we actually have people owning and not just renting someone else's property. And I, I do know someone who was at the Rosewood Villa condo who moved out because of the amount of rentals in that, in that facility. So I don't know if there's anything that we can do as a EDA to, to encourage or to, to legislate, it's not the right word, but to, to kind of guide them to do what the intended purpose was for that particular property.
And one of the things that I think I had, in my own feedback on the priorities, priority, prioritization exercise, isn't necessarily reflected by the sort of the consensus views, but one of the things I was wondering is, since we have this new source of funding in the local, the Laha, the, you know, is that something where we could use those resources towards some of the things we identified, like the 30% area median income type housing, where, you know, we've got, you know, we've, we've sort of made that decision from a policy point of view, that we have a significant amount, maybe not enough, but a significant amount that's recently been built in the sort of the 50 or 80% area median income. But, you know, we're still trying to figure out how to get more in that 30 and it requires more resources and things like that. But then also potentially addressing some of the homelessness issues. I don't know exactly what that means necessarily. I do know that one of the challenges that people experiencing homelessness do talk about is all the shelter that is available is in St. Paul. And people are, they have jobs in suburban areas, they, or they have opportunities for family in suburban areas or support networks. You know, the, the challenge is that it's not a very dense phenomenon in suburban areas. And so you're trying to figure, and I've mentioned this before, you're trying to figure out the balance between providing the shelter or the, or the temporary housing and the demand that's out there versus, you know, the cost of doing it and all that sort of thing. But I just, I just want to make sure that as part of our conversation, we think about ways that we can be perhaps, you know, creative or innovative or copy somebody else's creative and innovative ideas in that area. But not to, but those seem to be those areas that we, that we've, we've sort of already talked about prioritizing resources for, especially the 30% AMI, you know, type of affordable housing. And so I just wanted to emphasize that again as part of this discussion without saying that's our, that's our new policy going forward because we'll have the policy discussions as we bring this back. All right. Anything else on the?
I would like to piggyback on what you were saying about, that I, I agree with you, but I would like to know whether or not we can use those LAHA funds for services that are very important with 30% AMI and a lot of that is a lot of support. Because I sure don't want to have us put something in that doesn't have the support that's there because that's a recipe for disaster, so.
Well, and certainly if we can't through those funds provide, fund the support, maybe we can help with the other aspects of the project that then can provide the ability to fund the support in other ways too. Yeah, so we'll have to figure that out though.
Yeah, well, we have a lot to learn on how we can spend the money related to homelessness and prevention efforts. And I know Jeannie's involved in a lot of groups who are paying very close attention to that. We can spend the money on 30% AMI units and some of these homelessness prevention things you, you're interested in. How we're going to have to report on spending that, especially on the homelessness side is going to be the thing I think we're trying to really figure out. The 30% AMI stuff, those units are very, very expensive to create and the amount of Laha we're getting is not meaningful enough to really make an impact unless we can save it for a lot of years. So that's going to be a tough nut to crack too.
Sure. And that might not be the, the pool from which to, to do that. I don't know if that's where we, we look at that existing multifamily loan balance or something like that that's going to.
With a bunch of other stuff. Yep, absolutely.
Exactly. Okay. You're good. Well, I think, and I would just echo that, I think the, the, the plan to put this out there and available to the public and make it interactive and all that makes a lot of sense too. So I'll endorse that as well. I don't know that we have any objection to that from the members of the board.
No, I think that's a good idea.
All right. Well, thanks again to the staff for all the work that you've been doing in this, in partnerships certainly with DanTech, and especially bringing it forward and, and, you know, initiating the discussions with the board. We do appreciate that. And we look forward to the next level, the next stage of discussion. Thanks again.
Thank you.
As there being no additional business before the economic development authority this evening, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved by Senator Groff, seconded by Senator Bauer. No discussion on a motion to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously and the economic development authority meeting is adjourned at 6:36 PM. We'll just take a few moments to transition the move for the council meeting and then Staff perspective?
Mr. Mayor, no, no changes to the agenda published today.
All right. We have two consent agenda items. Are there any consent items that members of the council would like to move for separate consideration? Doesn't appear to be the case. We just have approval payments and one temporary gambling permit. Normally I would check with the public, but since we don't have too many items, I'm presuming that we may not have folks here for either of those, which are pretty routine. With that then, our next item, oh, we do have to, I'm sorry, we do have to have a motion on approval of the agenda. We have the agenda as presented, moved by Councilmember Strong.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Schroeder. Any discussion on the motion to approve the agenda as presented? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes unanimously. We have our agenda for this evening. Next on our agenda then is general public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on items that either are related to city business or are of interest to people in the community, but are not on this evening's agenda. We will provide an opportunity, we usually do provide an opportunity for public comment on agenda items as they're discussed or taken up by the council, but we also do, start of each meeting, provide an opportunity for general public comment on, once again, items that are not on that evening's agenda. Just a couple of quick rules of the road with respect to general public comment or any public comment at the council meetings. By council rule, we do have a three minute time limit per speaker, one opportunity to speak per agenda item per speaker. And we ask that if there are questions or requests, that those are directed to the council as the body or to the city as an entity and not necessarily to individuals. And then also if there are questions that require follow-up, we may direct follow-up subsequent to the comment or comments. And if there are a number of commenters who have a number of questions, we'll sort of accumulate those and then try, attempt to answer those once all the comment is done on a particular agenda item or in this case, general public comment. The only thing we'd also ask is that you state your name for the record at the start of your comments and indicate either your street or your address, if you're comfortable, for the official record of the meeting. We do have the two seats here directly in front of me that are available. So if we have a number of people here to speak, it is not problematic to have the next person having a seat in the seat next to the person who is speaking so that we can switch back and forth fairly quickly between speakers. And then finally, just from a housekeeping perspective, we do also ask that if you happen to have a name that, that isn't completely obvious to the general public as to how to spell it, we do have the clipboard there between the seats and when you finish with your comments, you can just jot down your name to help us with the spelling once again for the official record. So with that, we'll open up for general public comment this evening and ask anyone who wishes to speak in that section of the, tonight, to come forward.
Good evening, President Rowe and city council members. My name is Catlin Barstad. I'm a resident of 217 McCarran's Place West.
William Bach and Camp, yeah, 257 McCarran's Place.
We're also here with Dow Long as well. We're residents of the villas at McCarran's Lake. We were coming before President Rowe and the City Council because we have several major concerns regarding the overall development and we'd like to bring it to the council's attention. We started working with the city at multiple levels and initially brought these items to them starting last December of 2024. The first concern is regarding grading and drainage issues that have now evolved into water flowing towards some homes. My house in particular now has a patio slab that is cracked, as well as we're experiencing water intrusion in our lower level. We're working with a forensics building engineer and are awaiting their findings, but currently cannot rule out that these problems are connected. While the city has been initially responsive and issued a corrective action letter to the builder and the developer with a March 17 deadline, they've recently shared that the builder has only provided one of the three specific items that was requested with no current corrective plan to date. I also want to mention that this builder currently has two empty spec homes that remain unfinished and unsold and three empty lots, which he filed for voluntary foreclosure against in February of 2025. We provided this information to the city and we've been continuing to email and ask for updates, but we do not feel an adequate resolution nor plan has yet been defined. And while this issue remains outstanding, our bigger concern is that the city went and issued a building permit for the builder build on another lot, which is Lot 7. The second concern we have is what we call a close proximity build between existing homes and foundations, where there's a zero lot line on one side and less than six feet setbacks in some areas on the other side. In conjunction with the grading and issue of erosion, we've been discussing that second concern with the city. And we met with them back on March 5th, providing them, the various city representatives with the research that we did, where we feel per Minnesota State Building Code, protecting adjoining property code would be critical. And we also shared that the city of Minneapolis adopted this code years ago for medium to high density builds. At that time, we were told that the city would only recommend, but was not willing to adopt this code. They claimed that they have medium density builds across Roseville, but did not provide specific addresses, nor was it an apples to apples comparison to support that claim. Therefore, we do not feel that this is satisfactory. Additionally, upon speaking to our homeowner insurance agent, we've learned that there's no homeowner policy, homeowner policy that exists to date that protects against movement of earth. Unfortunately, due to the builder foreclosing, we feel this can't be delayed. The builder has not made any attempts to correct damages to our private road and curves from the previous builds, nor has he acted on corrective action that is sufficient from what the city has issued. And most recently, I currently serve on our board, HOA Association Board as the treasurer. We started obtaining quotes from pavement companies to determine appropriate costs to build up reserves for future maintenance. And at that time, we've recently discovered the planned specs that the developer submitted and that the city approved are specs that are designed for a walkway path. Per two paving companies that we've spoke to, those specs are not designed to withstand the weight of vehicles, including construction trucks and emergency vehicles like fire trucks or ambulances. We hoped we didn't have to come to the city before the city council, but now feel it's imminent and necessary. And therefore, we're requesting to be added to the agenda and would also like to ask that any construction activities be delayed until we can present our case with our supported documents and findings. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for coming this evening to bring this to the council's attention. I think it's probably appropriate before we put this on an agenda to understand what action the city council can take on, on these matters. I just don't know. And so I think that would be a part of it, but I think it's appropriate that we ask for some follow-up from staff to the council as, as sort of the first step as a result of this comment. And then we'll look at what are the appropriate next steps that are appropriate to take and make sure that we keep the residents and the HOA board members that are representing this evening aware of, of that, that process.
Yes, I think that's appropriate action and we'll continue from this meeting here to be in contact with you and to try to answer some of those other questions that have come up and continue the dialogue between staff and the homeowners association. But certainly I think it's appropriate to understand kind of what the council's role in this and we'll look into that and work with Ms. Turner on that. As far as what we have jurisdiction on and what we don't and communicate that to the residents as well, just so everybody has the same understanding of what can be done and what's possible. We certainly want to do what we can to assist them, but there might be limits and what we can do, we have the authority to do. So we'll look into that a little bit more. But we'll continue our dialogue with them and try to resolve some of these outstanding issues as best we can. But we'll give the council and the residents a full update once we know a little bit more.
Certainly the sooner the better.
Sooner the better, yes.
At least maybe a current status situation. And then if there's more follow-up that needs to be done, understandably, that may take more time.
And if there is action that the council can take, I don't think it's, you know, fine. I think staff were to put that on the agenda and a future agenda without having to come before.
Yes.
To do it, you know, if you find out this week or something like that, there is some action, given the apparent urgency of this, to put it on the agenda. And also then I would request, given these concerns, to follow up, to staff to follow up with council, to inform, you know, what the resolution of this is, with an update or a status.
Yep.
Somehow, or via some communication prior to the meeting.
Yep. Yeah, we'll have a response to you by the end of the week for sure and to the residents as far as what our next steps potentially could be. And certainly if it's clear that there, there needs to be some more council conversation on these things and there's some action you can take, we'll look to schedule that as soon as possible, whether it's next Monday or first meeting in May. Love to see. That, that makes sense. One of the reasons that I want to, you know, have that opportunity for that follow-up and, and feedback to the council is, and certainly to the residents, is that I, I don't want to create a situation where there's an expectation to come to the council with a case where we're not really in a position to make a decision about something because that's not in your best interest either. And so I just want to make sure we understand that and that you understand that as, as the resident representative so that we, we do the right things and the right people are taking the actions they can take. But we do want to make sure that we, we certainly, at least the council gets the, the update on the current status of things, that you're able to be kept in the loop on, you know, updates to what's going on or analysis of information presented this evening. And if there's more questions we have about what you've talked about, certainly the staff will follow up with you as well. So once again, we appreciate you being here this evening and taking the time out of your, your lives to do that. And we're, you know, disappointed that you've got to be dealing with all this because you would much rather be enjoying living in those, those houses and, and in your neighborhood and enjoying each other's company as neighbors.
Yes.
So once again, thank you. Appreciate you bringing that forward and we'll make sure and keep on top of the follow-up.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate you giving us the opportunity. That's great.
All right. Is there any other public comment under general public comment this evening? Seeing none then, we'll proceed to our agenda this evening. And this evening, under our business items, we just have the, the two items, one of which will probably be a little bit more significant than the other. And that is to receive an update and have some discussion related to the strategic planning process that we've been undergoing and especially the development of some goals and additional information. So I'll turn it over to our assistant city manager, Rebecca Olson, to initiate the
So I'll turn it over to our Assistant City Manager Rebecca Olson to initiate the conversation, and then I'm sure there'll be a cast of thousands coming up to add to the discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. You are correct. I am going to be, I guess, for lack of a better word, I'm going to be your tour guide tonight. So thank you. I do have the pleasure of kicking this off, bringing forward for consideration some of the work surrounding our strategic plan, but you are going to hear from all of our department heads this evening. And we're hoping, because we are presenting a lot of information, hoping that we can save the questions to the end, just so we can get through everything, make sure we touch on all of the points, and then we can obviously go back if you have questions on anything. So with that, I wanted to just put this up here. As you may recall, the work really started back in 2023 with our Envision Roseville Community Visioning Initiative, and this really led to updating our community aspirations. The aspirations were shaped by many months and many conversations around, with our public engagement and input from our community, and our community really shared what they were hoping for the future for our community. The community aspirations really set the foundation for the city to build on with our strategic plan. And council and staff use these aspirations to outline our vision, to explain our mission, and to create values that guide our decision-making and influence how we operate and interact. With the community aspirations in place, the vision, mission, and values in place, we then collectively and collaboratively put together what we call desired impacts. And these are really what we thought was going to help move our community towards that vision of our big grand plan for the community. So tonight, here we are, we're talking about goals, and these goals are also kind of representing those big-picture results that we want to achieve. They're broad, they're future-focused, and if successfully implemented, we'll see some of those terms in there, really are designed to move us closer to those desired impacts and the vision that we've set. As you see here, this is not the last step in the process. Once the goals are set, we are going to continue that work. We're going to come up with objectives that will help us build work plans to guide the implementation and measure our progress. So this, this is kind of, I wanted to set the stage a little bit because this is a metaphor that I'm sure you may have seen before, you may have heard before, but it's one that I routinely use when talking about strategic planning. And it really kind of helps me understand how all the pieces fit together. And so the way I kind of explain it to people is that think of our organization as a rowing team. You know, everybody has their own role. Each of us is really working towards the same goal, and that goal, that finish line, you as council are the ones that are kind of helping us figure out where that finish line is. These are the goals that we're talking about. We have somebody, I'm going to get the term wrong, but I think they're called the Coxway. Anyone know about rowing? Is that what they're called? All right, great, I got it right. We're looking at our city manager as that person. He's the one that's making sure that we are staying on track, that we are adjusting as needed so that we can all work towards getting to that finish line. And then the rest of us, the staff, we're the rowers. We're the ones that are really, you know, doing the work, powering us to move forward, and then also making any adjustments based on what our city manager has having us do. So that's really just setting the stage. It helps me kind of picture it. Hopefully, it's a little bit helpful for anyone else. So we want to make sure that we've got that finish line set, and that's what we're working on tonight is those goals. This slide is really just a reminder of where we've been. I'm not going to go into it in depth because we've all kind of seen it before, but it highlights our vision for that vibrant, safe, and inclusive community. It talks about what our mission is, and the strategic directions are the areas that we're going to use to help create the high quality of life. And then that foundation are our values. And then we also have community input, that is, that soil that is helping grow everything. For this one, I just want to mention that what we have been doing over the last several months has not just been about drafting language, but we're actually having really in-depth conversations about our values as we define here. Community input, our available resources, and where we're headed as a city. And the goals that are, that will be in front of you reflect more than just words on a page. They have really come out of deep conversations among staff about how we prioritize, thinking about how we budget, and how we deliver services. And our values have been forefront in a lot of what we do. And as you know, just to kind of like mention this, we do have a Strategic Racial Equity Action Plan. You're not going to see a separate plan on the Strategic Racial Equity Action Plan because what we've done is we've embedded equity throughout this entire strategic plan, throughout our goals, throughout our values. Our values are guiding us. We've got equity as one of our values, and we're integrating it into those desired impacts. You'll see it at success indicator level. You'll also see it in the goals. Eventually, you'll see it in objectives and metrics. So instead of having it be a separate standalone item, what we're really trying to do is make sure that it is embedded throughout everything that we do. So tonight, I'm going to pass this on to others, but I really want to recognize the work of all the department heads and our city manager because we have spent countless hours going back and forth on these. We've put a lot of time, a lot of effort into it. I also want to raise up and call out Antonio Montez, who has done a fantastic job of helping facilitate these conversations. It isn't always easy trying to herd cats, as I feel that we might be sometimes, but he's done a great job of doing that. And so tonight, each department head is going to present various goals. They're going to provide a little bit of context and how they align with their community aspirations, because those are really what we use to guide us, and then what success looks like. You'll also see a sample objective, but it's just there to give you an understanding of maybe what that next step comes as, because as we learned, sometimes you have to go a little further, a little deeper, in order to know where those goals have to be. So I'm going to stop talking now, and I'm going to turn it over, but like I said, I'll be, I'm going to run this PowerPoint, I'm going to be that tour guide. So I believe Matt is up next.
Yeah, we've got kind of one more introductory slide, and this is, as we've been working through this process, one thing that was pretty important to us was how do we make sure that...
Actually, I'm just going to stop you. Can you, as you each...
Absolutely, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
...introduce yourself and your role with the community, just for members of the public who may not, believe it or not, may not.
It's hard to believe. Matthew Johnson, Parks and Recreation Director, thank you for the reminder, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council, for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. As part of this conversation, one thing that was very important initially to our whole group when we talked about this, but also as department heads talked, was really making sure that the community can see that alignment between the soil you talked about, which is that community input, and ultimately, the desired impact, the goal, and the success indicators. So with that, all of our goals are going to be framed using this template tonight. And so I just, so we're speaking a common language, just wanted to highlight kind of what we mean when we talk about these various items and how we're going to go through it. So council, you're all familiar with the desired impact. Those that are watching at home, millions that I'm sure are watching at home right now, may not be. And really, that desired impact, that's that highest level. That's the state of being. That is, you know, we're saying these are six strategic priorities and the highest level of what we're seeking. What we've done now is we're at that level where we're seeking goals. The goals are more action items. They're steps the city will take to attempt to achieve that desired impact. Under each desired impact, we have two or three goals, as I'm sure you saw in your packet. And then right underneath that, we've included the community aspirations that directly align with both the goals and the success indicators. The community aspirations that are shown on the slide, it'll encompass both the aspiration and then the "what we heard" section. They're all direct quotes from that Envision Roseville report. In an effort to spare you time, because it could get long, we are going to paraphrase those, but if there's any questions or follow-up, we can address that as well. The next column is the success indicators, and this is really designed now to make sure that we're all 100% on the same page about what success looks like. So it's one thing to have a goal, still pretty high-level, with a bunch of objectives going to that, but we should all be pretty unified about what successful implementation of that goal looks like. And again, if we've done our jobs right, it should pretty closely align with those community aspirations as well. As Rebecca mentioned, the sample objectives, I want to emphasize the word sample. This was really designed to give that holistic idea, if I'm going to stretch the rowing metaphor a bridge too far. The objectives may be the oars that are in the water, but there's going to be a lot of them. They really need to be vetted out more at the staff's side. This was just to give an idea of kind of what the meat and potatoes are eventually going to look like. So with that, the first one goes to Janice to really lead us off.
So I'm going to take the first one with...
And Janice, who are you?
Hi, Paul, just mayor. Janice Gilmack, I'm the Community Development Director. I'm going to lead it off with the first strategic direction tonight, which is economic vitality. There are essentially three goals that we've identified under the strategic direction. The first one is to create a climate that supports the retention and expansion of Roseville businesses. The second goal is housing types and programs that are provided in a manner that contributes to the economic success for households at all income levels. And then the third goal is to develop and advocate for safe, intentional, multimodal transportation systems throughout Roseville. And when we refer to multimodal, we mean public transportation, bike and pedestrian. So those three goals really come from the desired impact that the council has already approved, which is Roseville has a diverse and stable business community, offers a wide range of housing types for people at all income levels, and includes multimodal transportation options. So the first section of that desired impact encompasses our first goal, which is to create a climate that supports the retention and expansion of Roseville businesses. And again, in the interest of time, I won't read the specific community aspiration, but there is some language in there about healthy and vibrant mixes of businesses throughout the community, and there's also reference to small, locally-owned businesses and their abilities to be successful in Roseville. So if we are successful in achieving this goal, the success indicators will be that Roseville's overall commercial tax base experiences steady growth, programs and regulations evolve or adapt to meet the needs of the business community, and small, women, veteran, and BIPOC-owned businesses have a recognizable presence in the city. I wasn't going to read the sample objective, but again, we do have one in there that relates to the BRENA component of this goal.
And just to clarify, there could be multiple objectives under any given goal.
Absolutely.
Or just one, it just depends on what...
There likely would be, I think.
Yep. So that's goal number one under economic vitality. Goal number two under economic vitality relates to the second part of the desired impact, which is that housing types and programs are provided in a manner that contributes to the economic success for households at all income levels. There is quite a lot of language in the Envision Roseville report that ties the community aspirations under housing and development to this goal, but it talks about a balanced approach to housing development, and then that we are meeting the needs of our diverse communities as well as our aging population. So the success indicators under this goal, if we are successful in achieving this goal, housing in Roseville is provided in a manner that meets the lifecycle continuum. Roseville residents feel safe, secure, and stable in their housing, and Roseville residents are not cost-burdened by their housing. And one of the sample objectives here talks about an item we discussed during the EDA meeting.
So Jesse Farron, Public Works Director, I'll be giving the third goal for, under economic vitality, and this kind of speaks to the third part of the desired impact. So that is develop and advocate for safe, intentional, multimodal transportation systems throughout Roseville. The community aspiration that that kind of ties to is transportation and infrastructure, providing a modern, safe, and convenient way for people to, regardless of how they travel, and then they're safe and comfortable places for people to walk and bike to get basically where they want to go. The success indicators related around this goal is Roseville residents, workers, and visitors have multimodal options to connect to places they want in need, which are amenities and employment. And then Roseville advocates and partners with other agencies towards advancement of multimodal options. And then there's a sample of an objective that could be implemented. Then transitioning, our second strategic direction is a reliable and sustainable infrastructure. So we have three goals related to that. The first goal is develop and implement a strategic funding strategy that prioritizes key capital improvements that are planned, regularly assessed, and evolved based on city values and changing community needs. Goal number two would be implement the Civic Campus Master Plan on time, within budget, and with community input. And the third goal being city infrastructure supports sustainability goals of the city.
And I'll take over now, so Pat Trudgeon, City Manager. So under the strategic direction, under reliable and sustainable infrastructure, just a reminder that the desired impact is to have Roseville's assets and infrastructure that are effectively, efficiently, and sustainably planned, managed, and funded. As mentioned by Jesse, the first goal is to develop and implement a strategic funding strategy that prioritizes key capital improvements that are planned, regularly assessed, and evolved based on city values and changing community needs. As you know, we use the CIP as kind of that guidance, but we really want to strengthen that and really be looking forward and be even more strategic about it. That really aligns with the community aspiration of transportation and infrastructure, specifically about the high-quality infrastructure and anticipation and adaption to new trends to help promote the health and well-being and the prosperity of the community. So our success indicators are as follows: that all capital assets are catalogued and regularly assessed for condition and expected lifespan. Infrastructure updates and replacement is strategically planned and includes the community's voice. Capital projects are evaluated and prioritized on values guiding the city of Roseville. Those are those five values that Rebecca mentioned before. And that the funding strategies are developed and implemented to ensure that Roseville's infrastructure is maintained and updated to a level of service that meets or exceeds the expectations of the community. Then the last couple of ones are the residents are satisfied with the quality of the infrastructure, and that service interruptions are minimized. These are all things that we hope will show that we are successful in doing that. And we had a sample objective that we would use as part of the 2027 budgeting process and really show that connection between this goal and our strategic priorities. So that is that one. The next one, goal number two, once again, the same desired impact, would be to implement the Civic Master Plan on time, within budget, and with community input that once again aligns with the transportation and infrastructure aspiration about high-quality infrastructure systems that help maintain the health, well-being, and prosperity of the community. So our success indicators are fairly straightforward here, that one, that the city's maintenance and operations space needs are met within the approved budget. The city's license center and wellness and dance studio needs are met within the approved budget. And the final design was developed with community input. And as you can see, it's an objective that we have implementation scheduled and budget by the end of a certain time period, so we can go forward. As you know, we're actively working on that, so that is already in motion. I think now I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, so the third goal under reliable and sustainable infrastructure is one, again, that we talked a fair amount about, and this is that sustainability piece that came in throughout Envision Roseville. It's mentioned, we have, I think, one quote under the transportation and infrastructure community aspiration, but really, it's sprinkled throughout the entirety of that report. And the goal that we thought best reflected that is city infrastructure supports the sustainability goals of the city. Again, there's mentions throughout, but the specific community aspiration refers to the city proactively pursuing and implementing sustainability initiatives, green infrastructure and policies, and actions and incentives for creating more sustainable infrastructure. The success indicators on this one are pretty short and sweet, which could be the development of a climate action plan, completion and implementation, and that green alternatives are actively considered in asset replacement. Again, a sample objective is listed, but hasn't been thoroughly vetted out at this point. Moving on, we're going to go to my favorite strategic priority, which is parks and natural environment. We have a couple of goals that align pretty closely with that desired impact. The first half deals with Roseville's park systems, as Roseville's park systems and recreation programs are thoughtfully planned, sustainably funded, and well-maintained. And the second goal is Roseville's natural environment is actively protected and restored. Again, that first goal pretty closely aligns with the first half of our desired impact, and really is based on, again, what we heard really throughout the Envision Roseville process. We certainly heard from many residents that the parks are an asset, but a desire to keep moving forward with them. We heard that all residents, the first aspiration bullet, I'm going to briefly summarize, talks about access, wanting to make sure that residents have access to programming and parks in their neighborhoods. The second deals with ensuring that underrepresented populations and all populations have access to our parks and programs. The third talks about taking care of our existing facilities. And the fourth talks about proactively anticipating and exploring and ultimately implementing new parks and recreation amenities and opportunities. So our success indicators should pretty closely align with what we heard in Envision Roseville. The first is that Roseville's Parks and Recreation System Master Plan evolves to align with the needs of the community. The second... The second is that the Parks and Recreation System Master Plan continues to be implemented, because what good's a plan if you don't do it? The third is residents and non-residents, meaning workers and visitors across all demographics, utilize parks and participate in recreation opportunities. And the fourth is that Roseville's parks and programs positively contribute to residents' quality of lives. Again, there is a sample objective listed, but as with the others, just a sample. The second component, again, this ties pretty obviously to that second desired impact and was spelled throughout Invision Roseville. And that's, this will go much beyond parks and recreation, really talks about our city as a whole. I'm just the voice in this one. And that's that Roseville's natural environment is actively protected and restored. Specifically, the aspiration related to green space and environmental conservation, I believe was actually added this round, it didn't exist in the previous iteration. And it speaks to residents and business having access to high quality parks and green space. So this goal and the previous goal both sort of align with that. That there are resources available to residents and businesses to reduce their environmental impact and that the city proactively pursues and implements sustainability initiatives. So some success indicators, if we're working towards that goal, could be that Roseville's natural spaces positively contribute to the residents' quality of life. City programs and regulations support community members in their efforts to maintain, protect and restore the environment. The Parks and Recreation Natural Resources Master Plan is implemented and residents and stakeholders are empowered to preserve and restore Roseville's natural resources. With that, I think I turn this one over to Antonio.
Hey, good evening, I'm Antonio Montez, the Equity and Inclusion Manager here at the city of Roseville. Happy to be with you all this evening and talk a little bit about our strategic direction, the community and civic engagement one. So our goal is to create an environment for diverse stakeholder participation at all levels of city decision making. You'll see the desired impact here is highlighted in yellow, it's the only one. And we did that because we've made some changes since we last came in front of you to have the conversation about desired impact. So if you all remember, you all had lots of conversation about the word fun being included in our desired impact. And as we spent many meetings and much time together, working through what this meant for our organization, we had a lot of really good, insightful, deep, thoughtful conversations. And what we came back with was while we always strive to have fun every time we connect with community and want to be informed and in partnership with community, that doesn't always mean that it's going to feel fun for the community, right? If we have to have meetings that are informing folks of certain things that are happening in the community. They may not have a lot of fun, but we need to make sure they're informed, right? And they have an opportunity to give us feedback and input. So as we had those conversations, what you'll see in front of you is a new desired impact for consideration. What we have here is that Roseville's public across all demographics feels informed and valued for its feedback and input. Again, it's important for us to have folks feel informed, that they feel connected, they know that they're valued, that they have a chance for feedback and input. And while, again, we're going to strive to have fun when we can, that may not be something that we can commit to in every single time we have an engagement or a conversation with someone. So that's the desired impact that we are putting in front of you this evening. We had one goal for this, which was, again, to create an environment for diverse stakeholder participation at all levels of city decision making. And as with others, this ties back to our community aspirations, the city services and civic engagement and welcoming and inclusive. And what themes we have from this is really folks want access to information and they want to feel informed. They want processes and practices that work for everyone and that people are treated equally. Those were the things that came out of the community aspiration that spoke to me and really, I think, informed our success indicators, which you can see here. Roseville stakeholders are informed about the city's mission, vision, values and the strategic plan and how those things drive and/or influence our decisions. Residents understand how their input will be used and the level of impact it has on decision making in advance of participating. Engagements include an intentional plan for historically underrepresented populations to participate and that we create an environment that fosters a sense of stability and public engagement. And as with others, you'll see there's a sample objective there that we have for consideration. And I'm handing it over to the chiefs here to talk about their stuff.
Good evening, Erica Scheider, the Chief of Police here. And I'm going to start covering the first couple of slides and then I'll turn it over to the Fire Chief Brosnahan to cover the second two goals. And I'll start off with this first slide reviewing the three goals under the strategic direction of responsive services and safety. First goal is to take proactive steps to create a safer community through prevention, planning and early intervention. Second goal is developing and implementing a prioritized multi-year resource allocation strategy and structure to ensure people, resources and technology are in place to respond to the needs of the community. And then the third goal is to strengthen trust through transparency, accessibility and engagement. And on this next slide, I'll go just a little bit deeper into goal number one. First goal is taking proactive steps to create a safer community through prevention, planning and early intervention. And really this goal ties back to the community aspiration of safety and security and really gets into the, specifically that people of all ages and backgrounds feel safe and secure as well as trusting in police, fire and other emergency responders. And then another piece of this that ties back to the community aspiration is that Roseville is proactively addressing issues like poorly maintained neighborhoods, crime, housing instability and other issues. And for this specific goal, the success indicators are real time data and information are being utilized to improve operations, response and customer service, increase public safety involvement in community activities and outreach efforts, and then policy and procedures ensure the protection of the community. With that, I'll turn it over to the Fire Chief.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, my name is David Brosnahan, I'm your Fire Chief. The second goal for responsive services and safety is to develop and implement a prioritized multi-year allocation strategy and structure to ensure people, resources and technology are in place to respond to the needs of the community. So as we're going through this, the community aspiration really ties back to safety and security with the main aspiration to ensure trust of the responders and the overall safety of the community, kind of like the chief said in the first one. But really for this one, it's, you know, our community wants to not only feel safe, but to be safe. Our success indicators for this second goal are grants, partnerships and other funding resources contribute to improved resources and technology. Community members report feeling safe and secure and improved public safety response times. The third goal for responsive services and safety is strengthen trust through transparency, accessibility and engagement. So again, this ties back to the aspiration of safety and security, but also continuing to build trust in our business community, making sure we're serving them responsibly and professionally as well. Success indicators for this goal are increased involvement in city activities and outreach efforts. Trust is fostered through open discussion with city public safety officials and community. And policies and procedures maximize transparency, accessibility and engagement and increase calls for service from historically underrepresented communities. And then we have a sample objective there as well.
Michelle Petrick, Finance Director for the city. Our next strategic direction is city operations. We came up with three goals. Goal number one is technology, resources and processes are used to improve operations. Goal number two, the city attracts and retains employees who align with the mission, vision and values of the strategic plan. Goal number three is resource allocation meets operational needs while advancing strategic priorities.
So the desired impact for this one really focuses on the city's workforce and public officials, making sure that they're capable, nimble and forward thinking in order to achieve our strategic priorities. So what you'll notice, the community aspiration listed here is actually the same for all three goals under this strategic direction. And it's really intentional because achieving any of these goals, not just under city operations, but throughout the strategic plan, really depends on having high performing and a responsive workforce. And that's really at the heart of delivering those, you know, excellent city services and engaging meaningfully with our community. So what you'll see in the success indicators here really relates to that overall theme. What we're looking at is how well our internal operations, meaning like the tools and the systems and the support we provide, helping our staff be able to do their jobs effectively and respond to our community needs. So our success indicators here talk about city services demonstrating alignment with our strategic priorities, but also adapting as those priorities evolve. Residents report satisfaction with the quality and responsiveness of city services. And then our workforce and public officials report increased efficiency and capacity to deliver those high quality services. Goal number two really continues to build on that importance of a strong, capable workforce. And the goal is that the city attracts and retains employees who align with the mission, vision and values of the strategic plan. So while that community aspiration remains the same, the focus here really shifts to the people who make that service possible. So delivering that high quality responsive services really depends on having the right people in the right roles and creating a work environment that helps them thrive. So you'll see that the success indicators highlight that connection between values-based leadership, a proactive workforce development and staff retention. So in other words, we're not just looking to hire, we're looking to invest in and keep people who align with our vision. Again, sample objectives here, just to kind of give you an idea of what that could look like in the future.
And then I'll take the last one here. And then goal number three is resource allocations meet the operational needs while advancing strategic priorities. As you know, we do a lot of things on a regular basis that we're going to need to continue to do, but we want to balance that with these strategic priorities to the extent we would need to invest in additional resources. May not always, but we may need to do that. So we want to make sure there's a proper balance on that, that we don't lose the operational nimbleness that we can continue to do because resources are allocated in one direction. At the same time, we don't want to not implement the strategic plan. So this is something that we want to keep in the forefront for all of us to be thinking about as we look at budgets. And this ties to the aspiration about delivering our essential services. So our success indicators that you as decision makers report having the right information, that you can effectively allocate the resources to make sure that we're properly maintaining the balance between our regular operational needs and our strategic priorities and what the community has indicated. Also that residents feel the value of services that meet their needs. And then finally, the last success indicator is that budgeting includes prioritization of strategic goals while balancing the operational needs. You will see in a lot of these that it's more of trying to get a feeling of how people are doing. We think we can really leverage our community survey to really ask some of these specific questions and how we're doing. That's just a general comment for a lot of them. A lot more of them are more black and white, it's like, do we do it or not? Or do we know if we did that or not? So with that, we'll just pull up the slide here. This is all the goals here. That was a really quick overview of everything. We just wanted to get in front of you and the community just to be aware. So I think we can pause here and we would love to answer any questions you have, get feedback. We should probably talk about the one desired impact that we suggested modification. We can talk about what's next. In the end, if it's appropriate, we would like for the council to adopt these goals and the success indicators. And we can start talking about the objectives that will come back in a future date. If you think you need more time, that's fine. We would want to come back pretty quickly just so we can keep the momentum going. We have a really good pace and cadence going on right now. To get to that next level where we work more on the objectives, it's going to be much more expansive than just the department team. We're going to need to bring it into the departments a little bit more. So we're going to need to set that up and have those conversations. So I think we're anxious to get those going, but we want to make sure the goals that we have outlined here are in alignment with what the council wants to do. And then once we kind of get that head nod and approval, then we can move forward to the next step. So with that, I'll pause and any comments, questions, we'd be happy to answer.
I did just want to quickly touch on, you talked about the community survey as a way to gauge. I think another thing that we might want to investigate and think about, and we may be already doing, but maybe formalize more or expand, is sort of that user survey or participant feedback, you know, instantly after a program. I'm sure, for instance, the Parks Direct, that's pretty common, I'm sure. When you just paid in a particular program, you get the postcard or whatever that says, you know, let us know how we did or whatever. Those types of immediate feedback and very specific feedback is a great way to gauge how we're doing in some of these things too, besides sort of just the general population survey. And sometimes you can be a lot more granular with that than you can. So I just wanted to touch on that. My only other initial comment is I like the sort of the table, the matrix. The one thing that was missing for me under each of the community aspirations was the actual aspirational language to go with sort of the where statements that were part of that. So just something to think about in terms of how we present that, it helps with the context in my opinion. And then I've got some other feedback specific to goals, but I wanted to let the rest of the council have a chance to speak to some of that, their questions or thoughts too, before I dive into that.
I wonder if it makes the most sense just to go through each section one by one, like go economic vitality and then. Yeah, and see if anyone in the council has comments and just as a suggestion, not that there's.
No, I was thinking about that.
We all go through our own.
Yeah, because I was going to say that breaks it down a little easier, it's easier to track. And if we have particular staff feedback, we can also get that too. So the first one is the economic vitality area. We've got three goals outlined there as well as success indicators. Feedback from, or questions from the council on that.
Just in general, I would like to say I really appreciate taking the community aspirations from the prior work and plugging it in. I felt that when we got it originally, it felt kind of stale, we weren't sure how it fit. And I feel like it really ties it all together. So I thank you for having that wherewithal to like plug it in in a way that feels useful because it feels like it takes our planning sessions and your work and the work of the community and it really integrates it together in a way that my mind just couldn't figure it out. So I really appreciate you doing so.
I'll echo that for sure. Other thoughts, questions, feedback?
I have a question on goal three, and maybe it's more of a clarification. We're talking about multimodal transportation. Agree that fostering public transportation, bikes, pedestrians is important, although a core part of, you know, Roseville and our businesses and the nature of the businesses we have is also making sure that our road infrastructure is there. I wonder if there's anything that needs to be clarified on that goal to also note that we're not, not that we wouldn't prioritize roads, but if that needs something to note that. We also support, you know, the system that most residents of Roseville currently use. In addition to this, that it's a goal that, you know, Roseville maintains or, you know, advocates for, you know, safe roads, intentional roads. You know, we do make improvements to our roads for the safety, we make improvements for their, to assist with, you know, making changes to them, like, you know, four or threes, things like that as well, change in speed limits. I guess it's a question for the fellow council members if there's, you know, wording that we should change on there.
Does it make sense maybe to make sure that when we define multimodal, we include sort of traditional vehicles or something along those lines?
That's what I was thinking, if others would agree with that, I would be comfortable with that.
Does that make sense to the council?
That makes sense because it is a big part of it. So it's, even, we do want to include these other pieces, but that is an important part and I think.
And it's not just going away.
It's not going away and that we are going to support it, you know, and, you know, with our roads and things. So I do appreciate that comment.
And I bring it up because later on in later goals, we note that we're going to be using the strategic map to figure out like some of the stuff with the CIP and things like that. And, you know, roads aren't listed here, I probably should still have them on the CIP.
Absolutely.
I would just say that we had the same conversation and we decided to define multimodal with the other stuff just so it was clear. We weren't looking to exclude roads because we know that this is important. But it just, we had the same kind of conversation. Spent a lot of time on what do we mean by multimodal? Does that really include roads or roads and multimodal is the other things or is that all inclusive? So I think the clearer we are, the better.
I wonder if residents reading this and reviewing it would have the same questions I have.
I mean, yes, if you say that, but it's hard to have that conversation with over 30,000 residents.
And I think you want to be careful not to define something as only certain things if it's intended to include others, you know, or include the things in addition to the thing we all sort of assume is part of it without stating that the thing we all assume is part of it is part of it.
That's a buzzword to do.
And I think that the challenge probably too is that we don't want to, we may not be wanting to say that we're sort of encouraging the traditional transportation model over a newer, better transportation model or more inclusive multimodal. But we can't at the same time not acknowledge that some of the traditional means of transportation continue to be one of the modes that is in multimodal. So yeah, it's a challenge to figure it out.
Would it be appropriate to just remove the parenthetical words? Because really multimodal, wouldn't that implicitly mention anyway? I mean, we don't even know the hovercraft or whatever we could be all using as transport in a few years. So I feel like if we don't define it so specifically, just multimodal transportation systems, wouldn't that be more wide ranging?
If you wanted to potentially leave it that broad, you could specifically, because I was trying to think about how do you address sort of the.